14th, special time, 6:18 PM. I'm Chris Pia, Town Council Chair. Thank you everyone again for bearing with us. Technical difficulties is starting this meeting about 18 minutes late, but we've now got all the councilors and the mayor on, so we're going to begin with our agenda this evening. With that, I would like Councilor Perillo to ask for the invocation of Fledge of Allegiance. Bill, can you hear me?
Yeah, I got you.
Can you hear me? Yes, go ahead, sir.
Lord, as the events of these uneasy days unfold, we seek for your clarity and peace. We know you're with us during these challenging times. Help guide us as we seek your wisdom to help our ability to work together. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I'd like to take a moment of silence for Jay Wahlberg and Eugene Harkins, who passed recently.
Thank you, Mr. Perillo.
Thank you.
Just a reminder, if you'd just kindly... Just want to thank everyone again before we get into everything. All right, before we begin, I don't... I don't know who we have. Statement here, Laura, or Billy. Thank you. I don't know who. I can hear better now. So before we begin, I just want to take a second and take a moment and thank Mr. Wahlberg. A lot of us knew him for a long time as friends, colleagues, working together with him, whether you just got to meet him recently in the council over the last couple of years. So he was truly an instrumental person and part of this town. We're going to miss him very much. I know everyone here will. But on behalf of the council, I'd like to send our condolences to his wife and family and thank him for everything he truly did for this town. He's a wonderful, good person. So, thank you. With that, I'd like to entertain, I will entertain a motion for approval of the minutes of the March 9th and 30th Town Council minutes.
Motion to approve.
Motion by, I heard Ms. Dantcho, a motion by Ms. Dantcho. Do I have a second?
Second by Dave Harden.
Okay, I have a second by Mr. Harden. Any discussion on that item?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poisson.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the minute should be amended to reflect that I was in attendance at the meeting from the start. I was able to hear the proceedings, but due to technical issues, everyone's ability to hear me was intermittent until after the recess. Thank you.
All right, so Mr. Poisson, you motioned to amend the minutes to clarify you were on, but you were, because of the muting issue, that you were in attendance. Is that correct, sir?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Motion to, motion by...
Mr. Chairman, for clarity, Mr. Poisson is referring to the March 30th minutes, correct?
Yes.
Mr. Poisson, March 30th being now is a special meeting on the go-to meeting, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Dantcho. Any discussion on the amendment? No, hearing none, a call to a vote. All in favor, please. Excuse me, we'll do a roll call vote on that. I'm sorry, we're going to do roll calls so everyone's clear. Margot, if you don't mind.
Okay. Ms. Shake.
Yes.
Mr. Taveras.
Yes.
Mr. Harden.
Yes.
Mr. Khan.
Yes.
Mr. Poisson.
Yes.
Mr. Perillo.
Yes.
Mr. Connor. Mr. Connor.
Jim. Jim, are you on mute? We have you on mute. Are you there? Jim, can you hear us? Margot, can you continue with the roll call? In case Mr...
Mr. O'Brien.
Yes. Yes.
Ms. Dantcho.
Yes.
Chairman Pia.
Yes.
Mr. Connor.
Mr. Connor, can you hear us, sir? We have you on the screen, but as a mute. As muted.
I'm here.
How do you vote on that? Mr. Cuthbert, yeah, for amending? Yes or no?
Yes.
Margot, you received that?
I got it.
So unanimous. Unanimous vote, thank you, Mr. Poisson. This, the amended minutes, is that correct?
You approve them as amended, so that's fine.
Okay. So we can move on?
You can, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, excuse me, next item on the agenda is ceremony presentations awards, seeing none. I'm going to move on to communications and bills, seeing none. Item number 4.1, mayor's report. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Council Chair. I'm going to address you mostly about the COVID-19 updates. All of the town departments of the town of Stratford are actively monitoring the coronavirus outbreak. We are in regular contact with state and federal agencies. Our local officials are remaining up to date on guidance from the federal Centers of Disease Control, the Departments of Public Safety, and we have been working in concert with the State Department of Public Health, the Center for Disease Control, as well as the Governor's Office. As you mentioned before, we lost our beloved Finance Director Jay Wahlberg to the coronavirus on Thursday, April 9th. We are deeply saddened that we won't experience his countenance, his sense of humor, his experience, and his focused direction on improving Stratford financially. To his family and wife Marlene, we share a deep sense of loss and we always hold the memory of Jay close to our hearts. Especially when we think about spending money, we can see him shaking his finger at us and saying, "No, don't do that. I wouldn't advise it now." Jay was so very well-respected in the municipal community and many of the other financiers from other towns have reached out and expressed their condolences to all of us. Though our town buildings are close to the public, our town departments continue to operate and provide service to our community. Last week, Governor Lamont urged teleworking wherever possible, so we've invested in laptops to afford employees that can telework the opportunity to do so. We expect to have a very lean crew of any employees in buildings. However, our custodians are still being diligent and cleaning everything. Our first responders will continue their service and protect Stratford. Those that are working will have, all have PPE, masks, gloves, sanitary supplies available to them. The Health Department is in its seventh operational week of responding to COVID-19. They continue to monitor the health status of the town, calling all those who are reported through to us from DP, the Connecticut Department of Public Health Disease Surveillance System, attest positive. We are providing education about self-isolation for those with symptoms and quarantine for those in the household. Our efforts have been enhanced with the addition of the Board of Ed School Nurses on our team, and we will now try and capture some information on recovery. We provide broad symptoms logs and guidance as well as resources for them should they need assistance in obtaining prescriptions, groceries, and services, et cetera. Community messaging and outreach remains the core of our response, and though the Health Department talks about their messaging, I would be remiss if I didn't talk about how adept and proficient Mike Downs has been at getting the message for all town departments out to the general public. We continue to message on various platforms, social media, and Everbridge regarding social distancing. We reached out to the larger establishments such as Walmart, Home Depot, and the grocery stores to make sure they are implementing best practices to keep their employees and customers safe while providing essential goods and services, providing information of how to make use of, what to make use of, face masks, masks are front and center. It's a better alternative to a disposable paper surgical mask as they can be cleaned and reused. Partnering with our Emergency Management Director and department, we have reached out to the funeral directors to help assist with planning for increased caseloads. As the head of Region 1's Public Health Emergency Response in this year, Stratford has worked with EMS to receive and distribute PPE to the 14 towns which is intended to be redistributed to acute care and community care partners. Regions 1's distribution site is Sherwood Island State Park in Westport with the intent of weekly distributions. Long-term care, assisted living, residential group homes will also be picking up PPE for their supplies. In Stratford specifically, we distributed to the Stratford VNA N95 and surgical masks and space shields as to the actual distribution, though it was very small. In dispatch to date, they've had 322 calls processed and dispatched using Protocol 36, which is pandemic protocol. Out of that, 118 or 41% screened as sick, flu-like, or COVID symptoms. We're fully staffed and the deep cleaning of the Dispatch Department is ongoing. Staff are briefed weekly on the evolving COVID situation. Supervisors have modified their schedule to provide a broader coverage during times of the highest exposure. And April 12th through the 18th is National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. In EMS, all the staff are being pre-screened for symptoms as soon as they arrive before punching into work. David, I'm sure you experience that yourself every day at the hospital. Several volunteers have stopped volunteering until COVID is over. EMS headquarters is being deep cleaned three times a week. Staff seem as very positive and motivated. This is what they train for, as they say. They're following all the PPE procedures, just worried like everybody else. Our chaplain program and supervisors are offering assistance. We maintain a daily roll call to kick off each shift, which helps maintain motivation and forward momentum. Call dial volume is down in March as people started staying in their homes, but has since gone back up to normal levels, which is about 20 calls a day, as now people are experiencing symptoms. Call volume is dominated by COVID calls. All staff are wearing masks at all times. We have developed the deep cleaning, disinfecting ambulances equipment, and we have also developed systems for cleaning and reusing some equipment, such as suits and masks. We are still in need of N95 masks and gowns. There have been several dispersments from the state, but we are going through them pretty quickly. We have stood up a supply warehouse for our public safety PPE and supplies in our training room and are making regular dispersments to our partner departments when requested. From the police, the first directive was the response to sudden and untimely death calls. This directive ensures appropriate steps are taken for the death investigations while maintaining a level of safety for the officers and investigators. The directive also mandates the use of PPE when entering a home of a suspected COVID-19 death. The second directive was enforcement of social distancing guidelines. This directive requires officers to keep a diligent check for social distancing violations in recreational areas. The directive also authorized issuing infractions for Town Ordinance 152-11, Dangerous Activities for Violations and Circumstances When Safe Protocols Are Not Followed After a Warning. On the equipment side, they're doing fairly well, however, they could use more N95 masks. The Fire Department has been very active keeping up with COVID-19 concerns, including medical requests and keeping the firefighters safe. They've been aggressive with keeping up the inventory of PPE, and as of today, they have approximately 595 masks, 25 cases of medical gloves, and close to 90 Tyvek-type suits that were available for closer contact calls, CPR, heavy bleeding, et cetera. We've been diligent about cleaning the gear used on calls with cleaning and disinfecting the apparatus as needed, as well as maintaining an adequate supply of cleaning products at the stations. To date, we've had one firefighter test positive for the virus, and with that, we quarantined the rest of the ship, the remaining three firefighters, from that station for 14 days. They will start back on duty tomorrow. The Fires and Marshals Office has been responding to plates fire calls and scheduled appointment-type inspections, so to limit their exposure also. Firefighters have been doing some drive-by birthday parties to keep the spirits high for the young ones. The construction on the Huntington Road Firehouse with the second floor is moving along very well, and hopefully in two to three weeks, it should be close to the end. From the Public Safety Director, we are, they are constantly evaluating proper application of resources and techniques to provide the best response to the community while simultaneously maximizing protection to the safety personnel. We have received tremendous public support, examples such as Home Depot, Walmart, the state reps McGordy and Gresko, Jim Fian, Stratford Board of Ed, and Green Farms Academy. Foundation just made a substantial donation to PPE today. They found a new cleaner to help clean and sanitize the public safety, sanitize the public safety equipment and vehicles, which they're doing daily. They're coordinating with the community to provide the funeral homes for logistics support. As some of you may know, the Office of Vital Statistics in Bridgeport is still closed, which makes it difficult for us to get the death certificates we need from the hospital and then officiate at the burials. The Public Safety Director is also working on a 30- to 90-day-plus operations through Planning Cell, and he's also coordinating with Dr. Murphy, who's doing the drive-through testing down at the Honeywell property. Community Services, Candy has been doing a manly job as well. She's coordinated the Sedex of Food Services. They are providing the Gradago lunches and breakfast for children at five locations, Franklin Johnson Nichols Schools, South End Community Center, and Sterling House Community Center, Monday through Friday. This week starts the fifth week of operation with over 400 bag lunches and breakfast provided daily. The food pantries continue to be stocked and able, and they are able to meet increasing demands. Sterling House and the South End Community Centers are grateful for the many donations from the public and our restaurants that have helped them serve additional residents. The Stratford Clerchey Association Lord's Kitchen Supper Program provides to-go meals on Mondays and Wednesdays at Christ Episcopal Church. The mobile food pantries are now doing drive-throughs. Stratford Community Services is providing youth and family telecounseling and juvenile review board cases management services. Community Services continues to process applications for residents for CT Energy Assistance Program and provide information and referral for social services. A list of how to access the benefits online or by phone, such as SNAP, have been developed. Cooping with Corona, a list of online and telephone behavioral health hotlines, support groups, and recovery supports also have been made available. The Center for Family Justice, which operates a satellite office, Community Services is also working remotely. As a reminder, their domestic violence hotline number and sexual assault numbers are available. The South End Community Center is increasing the times that patrons can utilize pantry services and continue to prepare tax, income tax returns at no cost for residents falling for the IRS Vita Volunteers Income Tax Assistant. Open Doors of Fairfield County, our Regions Coordinated Access Network, has decreased shelter census by transitioning homeless individuals to anchor hotels in Bridgeport, Milwaukee, Stanford, and Danbury areas. Access Health Connecticut has extended their special enrollment for health coverage period through April 17th. Senior Services continues wellness calls weekly to all active members. They're beginning wellness calls to expired members. Social work is reaching out to the senior housing sites to maintain contact and bridge any resources needed for those dwelling there. Anyone stating food insecurity from either a wellness call or an outside caller being connected with the appropriate resources and followed up on weekly. Partnering with Riverview Bistro to provide frozen meals to bridge the gaps in service for such meals, such as meals on wheels and grocery deliveries, which are having a much longer turnaround time. We continue providing support and distance therapeutic recreation to our cherished clients and families. Our community councilors, you should be very proud of our community who have rallied to support one another in a manner that is truly reflective of Stratford. Donations of food and PPE, masks, and offers to help have been pouring in from everyone who wants to be of assistance. I'm pleased to report more than 90 wellness calls were made to our veterans. Though we will most likely have to reschedule Restaurant Week, I'd like to bring to your attention the website, wwwstrattfordrestaurantweek.com, which highlights restaurants that continue to operate and provide takeout food. A segment of the marking video that the Economic and Community Development Commission has been working on focuses on our restaurants. It's entitled, "We're Still Cooking." I hope you enjoy it and we'll share it with your contacts. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Any questions for the mayor?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poisson, I see your screen lit. Go ahead, sir.
Madam Mayor, I was wondering if you or maybe Mr. Timniak can just clear up some misconceptions that are out there about our taxes are going up 5%, 8%, 11% across the board. I can tell you, in my district, nobody has contacted me and nobody has complained about their taxes going up. However, they have heard all these quote-unquote rumors, and I just was wondering if you could, you know, straighten that out for me, please.
Mr. Timniak?
Yes, how is everybody tonight? Last Friday, we sent out in the pony a revale packet, which was prepared by Donna Orlovsky, our tax assessor. She gave a breakdown of every single district. Well, not council district, but the revale company broke down the town into districts for neighborhood mapping, and in that, it explained what was broken down in there, whether it was multifamily, single-family, what type of houses they were, and it specifically showed what neighborhoods went up, what neighborhoods went down, what type of house increased in value, what type of house decreased in value. So the idea that a neighborhood went up by 22% is not in any sort of reality of what was published by our tax assessor or what occurred by the Municipal Evaluation Services. Individual properties may have gone up, but each property is based upon what the homeowner put into it, whether they made improvements to it or not. And when you look at individual properties, and I think of, you know, areas of town which we know saw great improvements in individual properties, like, you know, the little, from Marnix to the Little Pub, obviously, an investment was made in that. And I'm just giving that as an example of how a property value would increase. But to answer your question, Councilman Poisson, as a whole, no neighborhood went up 22%.
Okay, thank you very much. Through the chair. Thank you very much, Mr. Timniak. Thank you very much. And I also wanted to just confirm that if your house goes up in value, that is a good thing, correct?
Yes, that's exactly what we strive for. That's what we do. That's the quality of life we're offering the residents of Stratford right now. In specific areas where you saw multifamily homes increase, you know, that's because the value of each side of that house has increased and the rental income, and the desire to move to Stratford created a value for that particular niche of the market. And you're seeing that statewide right now with all of the housing projects being specifically, that's really what's being built across the state is housing, which in Stratford has become a desirable neighborhood, which put in heavy emphasis on more home. So that is exactly what we were working for the last couple of years, to increase the quality of life and the desire, ability to move and live in Stratford.
Beautiful. Thank you. Through the chair. Thank you very much, Chairman. Thank you very much.
I got you. Ken, Greg, hold on. Madam Mayor, Greg, I got you. Hold on. Madam Mayor, anything else for Mr. Poisson? Do you know that you went through, Mr. Timniak, through that?
No, no, thank you, Councilor.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Greg, I heard you, is that correct?
Yes, thank you, Chris.
All right, sir. Questions for the mayor?
Looking at the tax assessor's report, neighborhood 27 went up 22.55%. Mr. Timniak just denied the tax assessor's own figure. My neighborhood went up 10%, four other neighborhoods, 10%.
Greg, is there a question for the mayor?
Yes.
Okay.
Is tax assessor's information correct or is Chris Timniak's statement correct?
So the question for the mayor, okay.
Through the Council Chair.
You may, Madam Mayor.
The answer is both are correct. The tax assessor broke down into districts, smaller districts than council districts. And what Mr. Timniak was referencing was no council district went up 22%, councillor can. There are more than 30 districts in this report, and they are very small in number. And so for your particular district councilman, the Stony Brook co-ops and the condos actually went down in value. So their, their value, unfortunately for them, went down. Good for their taxes and good for their assessment, their personal assessments within their co-op, but maybe not good for the real estate values. Through you, Mr. Chair.
Stony Brook, which represents 400 households out of possibly 2,000 households, went down by about 1%, maybe 2%. Overall, the neighborhood that they're in, even though they represent about 20%, 30% of the households, the neighborhood they're in went up by an average of 11%, 10.6%. So council district, that's one way to cut it, Mr. Timniak. Congratulations. But the tax assessor's report, you have acknowledged, stands on its own merits. And we do have a neighborhood that's a pretty big orange splotch, pretty much representing on Mr...
Greg, is this, again, we're under questions for mayor. So what's your next, do you have another question?
A question. Yeah, I questioned the recategorization of the tax assessor's neighborhood map. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for the place?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Paul Taveras.
Mr. Taveras, I have you. Go ahead, sir.
Mayor Widdick, I just, I've been looking at this reevaluation also, and it looks to me as the districts most impacted are 3, 4, and 5, especially with multis and duplexes risen 40%. So is there any way in your administration you're going to address those folks that are most vulnerable? I mean, we're coming through the pandemic, which people are losing their jobs, and all of a sudden faced with an impact of being furtherly financially impacted with being able to pay these taxes. Do you have any kind of contingency plan on addressing that?
Through the Council Chair, may I address?
May, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Chairman. So, Counselor, as you saw in your agenda for today, we are talking about a tax deferment. I hope you will vote positively for that because that will give the aid that you would need for your constituents who may have lost their jobs or maybe in a position where paying for taxes is probably second in nature. And it's quite a generous deferment. We have sent you information in your pony. The Finance Director is here to talk about it. Also, Mr. Timniak is here to talk about it. And again, when we're talking about assessments and we're talking about revaluation, it is the balancing of the grand list to compare to market. That means that those duplexes and homes that might have been less expensive are in higher value right now because there are more of a demand, which is exactly what we aim to do, as Mr. Timniak said, to improve the quality of life, improve a taxpayer's asset so it is more beneficial to them as an asset, and it costs, it provides more of a dollar value. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mayor Widdick. Any other questions, Mayor?
Can I just respond to the mayor with the chair?
Well, you may, if you have questions.
Well, I just wanted to say that I'm for anything that's going to provide relief for the residents, Mayor, absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Taveras. Any other questions for the mayor? Nope. Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate it.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, I was muted. I didn't realize it.
Mr. O'Brien.
On this topic, my house...
You have a question? You have a question? Okay, go ahead, sir.
On this topic, my house went up $12,000. I'm glad because it means the house is worth more. Isn't it true, though, that the mill rate you propose is not the binding one? We can lower that somewhat by working the budget.
Through you, Council Chair.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, you are absolutely right, Bill, that the budget mill rate is proposed. It is your responsibility, your due diligence, to go through the budget and propose the mill rate that you... and propose the mill rate that you want to be levied to the taxpayers of the town of Stratford.
Thank you. Just want everybody to understand that.
Thank you. Thank you, Paul. All right, moving on. Next item on the agenda is going to be 4.3.1, Public Works Committee.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poisson, I see you.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 4.3.1A.
A second.
I have a second by Ms. Dancho. Any discussion on A?
Mr. Chairman, Greg Can.
Greg, I have you. You have a question on a discussion under A. Go ahead, sir.
Yes, sir. You know, we have many projects in progress. On this one, I believe it would be outside Sikorski. Was there not funding? Did we not previously approved funding for the entire project? And what's the need for? Why is this an?
Sure. Mr. Poisson, do you want to ask and answer that first, being that you were the chair of the committee and you worked with Town Engineer Casey on this?
Sure thing, Mr. Chairman. AI engineering is asking for more money, which tends to happen with projects of this size. And when the state is involved, the important thing to remember is that none of this is town of Stratford money. This is all in a grant through the state of Connecticut. And also Sikorski is chipping in a very large portion. We put in here specifically that it is contingent upon the project finding the funding. This project is nearing completion, but there's still a lot of loose ends and loose money from different aspects of the project that Mr. Casey was pretty confident that the money was going to be found.
Thank you, Mr. Poisson. Greg, is that good?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other discussion on item for a call vote? Nope, hearing no one speak up. I want to call roll call vote. Margot, if you may, if you might.
Okay, this is Margot Pickett, the council clerk. I'm going to conduct the roll call. Ms. Shake.
Yes.
Mr. Taveras.
Yes.
Mr. Harden.
Yes.
Mr. Can.
Yes.
Mr. Poisson.
Yes.
Mr. Perillo.
Yes.
Mr. Connor.
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
Ms. Dancho.
Yes.
Chairman Pia.
First Pia votes yes.
That's unanimous.
Thank you, Margot. Unanimous. Next item, B, Mr. Poisson, if you would like to continue on that one.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 4.3.1B.
Motion by Mr. Poisson. Do I have a second? Second by Dave. I have Dave Harden on video. Thank you. Any discussion on item B? I hearing none. Margot, we'll call for a vote, please.
Yep, this is Margot Pickett, the council clerk. I'll conduct the roll call vote.
Yes.
Mr. Taveras.
Yes.
Mr. Harden.
Yes.
Mr. Can.
Yes.
Mr. Poisson.
Yes.
Mr. Perillo.
Yes.
Mr. Connor.
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
Ms. Dancho.
Yes.
Chairman Pia.
Pia votes yes.
That's unanimous.
Unanimous vote. Thank you, Margot. Next item on the agenda, item 4.3.2, the Build Needs Committee.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poisson.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 4.3.2. And if we could take A and B together because they are both with the Stratford High renovation project.
Mr. Leclerc, county attorney. Leclerc, is that okay?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 4.3.2A and B.
Motion by Mr. Poisson. Do I have a second for that?
A second.
I heard Ms. Dancho first. Sorry, Dave. On item 4.3.2A and B, as Mr. Poisson mentioned, the high project. Okay, here it's on your call for a vote. Margot, you may.
Margot Pickett, council clerk, conducting the roll call vote. Ms. Shake.
Yes.
Mr. Taveras.
Yes.
Mr. Harden.
Yes, Margot.
Thank you. Mr. Can.
Yes.
Mr. Poisson.
Yes.
Mr. Perillo.
Yes.
Mr. Connor.
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
Ms. Dancho.
Yes.
Chairman Pia.
Yes.
Unanimous.
Unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Poisson, if you'd like to continue on item C, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 4.3.2C.
Excellent. Thank you. A second to that motion. Do I hear one?
Second, Bill O'Brien.
I saw Mr. Harden's hand. I got him. He moved. Sorry, Bill. Any discussion on item C? Hearing hearing none. Margot, please.
This is Margot Pickett, the council clerk, and I'll conduct the roll call vote. Ms. Shake.
Yes.
Mr. Taveras.
Yes.
Mr. Harden.
Yes.
Mr. Can.
Yes.
Mr. Poisson.
Yes.
Mr. Perillo.
Yes.
Mr. Connor.
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
Ms. Dancho.
Yes.
Chairman Pia.
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you, Margot. Next item on the agenda is town attorney for point, 4.4, town attorney Hodgson.
Yes.
Sir Hodgson, do you have a report this evening?
I do not. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is going to be 6.2.1, the Resolution Regarding the Deferment Program. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, this is Laura Dancho, District 10. I would like to move to approve item 6.2.1, a resolution regarding the deferment program as recommended by Dawn Sable, Acting Director of Finance.
Motion by Ms. Peterson. Do I have a second?
Second, Dave Harden.
Second by this. Program. As we were, as we were discussing before, this is the deferment program. This is that's going to allow residents per the governor's executive order, okay, to defer their tax payments for up to 90 days from the original due date. So this is a really good thing for everybody. Basically, in summary, I know it's been out in our pony. I want to read as well as the memo. This is just a good thing to help people and basically help the town keep business. Any discussion on this item?
It's Greg Can.
Greg, go ahead. I have you.
Thank you, Chairman Pia. Just looking for clarification on the next last paragraph that speaks about significant economic impact. Do we have a definition for that that we can share with homeowners?
Greg, you broke up. State that one more time. The audio broke up something. I didn't.
Do we have a definition of significant or some examples to be used so that people know what the threshold may be?
Council Chair.
Madam Mayor.
This program has been developed by Governor Lamont and is issued through the Office of Policy and Management. That that department from at the state level will issue what the requirements are and what the definition of significant relief and who needs, who needs to apply and how they need to apply. And I'll give you a for for example. The governor was extremely conscious that they didn't, he didn't want to give a tax deferment to a landowner or a property owner who was not sending or giving that deferment or that tax break to the tenant. So there there are stipulations in place in order to, that will allow the tax collector and tax assessor to accept these kind of applications.
Is there a, is there an PIA? Did they offer, did the state offer a timeline for sharing that?
So Chris.
I can speak a little bit on this.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, I have you. Go ahead.
All right. I was speaking with Brian Leclerc earlier in the week about a form OPM is going to be sending everybody. So anybody who was interested in applying for this relief will have an opportunity to fill out a form. I don't know if there's a final form from from OPM on this, but they were basic questions. The initial thought was to keep it broad, saying, have you been impacted by, you know, any sort of COVID-related unemployment situation? Have you been impacted through an illness which prevented you from working? I don't, I don't have that in front of me. I don't know if Attorney Leclerc wants to chime in on on that. But to answer Councilman Can's question, that is what they were working on developing.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, if I may, through you. That's Brian Leclerc, Assistant Town Attorney. Mr. Can, as you know, the governor has issued a number of executive orders, 25 to be exact. And one of his orders requires every municipality in the state to offer some form of assistance to taxpayers. Under this deferment program, the governor left it to the Secretary of the Office of Policy and Management of the state of Connecticut to define those significantly affected by the COVID-19 pandemic and to issue guidance as to which taxpayers, businesses, and nonprofits would be eligible. An application has been promulgated by OPM, the Office of Policy and Management, regarding the deferral program. And for eligibility for a resident, one must attest that their household has suffered a reduction in income of at least 20% due to COVID because the individual or individuals in the household have been furloughed without pay or they had their hours significantly reduced or they've become unemployed, resulting in that 20% minimum reduction in household income. Businesses and not-for-profits are also eligible if they can attest to a 20% de expected decrease in, I'm sorry, a 30% expected decrease in revenue from March to June 2020 as compared March to June 2019. As to landlords, the mayor is correct. There has to be a significant revenue decline in any rental property by the landlord or a commensurate forbearance being offered to the lessees and the tenants before a landlord would be eligible for this program.
Thank you all for that preliminary information. Appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, Bill O'Brien.
Mr. O'Brien, go ahead.
Is Dawn Sable with us?
Dawn, are you, I have you on mute right now. Can you unmute yourself, Dawn?
Hi, I'm here, Dawn Sable.
Okay, I just wanted to say thank you for stepping in at a very difficult time to replace a great man. And your member animal of April 9th was very helpful for me to understand this whole program, but thank you.
Thank you.
And Dawn, Dawn, while you're on this, there with Pia. Just so I'm clear, I did read it in there. Every municipality has to elect one or one of these options by April 25th. Is that correct?
Yes, or or both.
One or both. Thank you. By April 25th. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clarify that. Any other questions? Any other discussions with this item? No? Okay, we're to call for a vote.
Is that me? Am I on?
Margot, you're on, yes.
Margot Pickett, council clerk, this is the roll call vote for agenda item 6.2.1. Ms. Shake.
Yes.
Mr. Taveras.
Yes.
Mr. Harden.
Yes.
Mr. Can.
Yes.
Mr. Poisson.
Yes.
Mr. Perillo.
Yes.
Mr. Connor.
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
Ms. Dancho.
Yes.
Chairman Pia.
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Unanimous. Thank you all. Next item on the agenda is 6.2.2. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, this is Laura Dancho, Town District Counselor. And I move to approve item 6.2.2, a resolution authorizing the issuance of $50 million in tax anticipation notes of the town to help pay current expenses and obligations of the town for fiscal year 2021. And that in accordance with section 2.2.9 of the town charter, that this resolution become effective immediately.
Opened by Ms. Dancho. Do I have a second? Seconded by Ms. Dave Harden. I see you, sir. Thank you. Any discussion on this? This is what we just discussed under the governor's executive order for the tax anticipation. The item, I'm going to call for a roll call vote again.
Margot Pickett, council clerk, this is the roll call vote for agenda items 6.2.2. Ms. Shake.
Yes.
Mr. Taveras.
Yes.
Mr. Harden.
Yes.
Mr. Can.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Perillo.
Yes.
Mr. Connor.
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
Ms. Dancho.
Yes.
Chairman Pia.
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you, Margot. Next item on the agenda under new businesses, item 7.1. I will entertain a motion for that item.
Mr. Chairman, Bill O'Brien.
Mr. O'Brien, go ahead, sir.
As this is in my district and I have been on a special committee about this, I move that the contract for the Benell football field resurancing and repair be awarded to Field Turf USA Incorporated and that the mayor be and is hereby authorized to enter into a contract with Field Turf USA Incorporated for such informed satisfactory to the town attorney.
Mr. Poisson, second.
Seconded by Ken Poisson. Any discussion on the item? This is a.
Chairman.
Yep, go ahead, Greg. Go ahead.
Thank you. Greg Can. Just like I mentioned, thank you, sir. And, you know, please clarify me if I'm wrong. For the 2021 CIP, this item, I believe this is the item that's included in the proposal and it's budgeted at $1.5 million. So if I'm correct in that correlation, then I presume that it'll be adjusted accordingly because the actual cost, if I read, was around 980,000. And it brings up, you know, two points for me. One is for large projects, we should, we should try to be more more, more accurate. And when we come up with proposals, I know it's difficult because we're doing estimates and we don't have those RFPs. But anything preliminary that can right-size our bonding and right-size our expected expenses would be appreciated in terms of just the accuracy of those estimates. And and I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Mr. Timniak. Mr. Timniak.
Somebody could verify.
So, Mr. Chairman.
Chris could verify. This is the CIP item.
Hold on, Greg. Got you. Madam Mayor, go ahead.
Thank you, Council Chairman. Councilmen Poisson and O'Brien, just help me with the math. When we talked about these projects during CIP, we realized that the Benell field, the proposal of the baseball field to be included was part of that $1.5 million that we, that you approved in last year's or this current year's CIP. When you started to look at that project, you realized that the existing turf field was in need of repair. And that needed to be done first because to do a new project for the Benell baseball field without repairing the existing football field would be putting good money after bad. It just didn't make any sense. So I, as I understood it, you did the repair of the field first in part of this $1.5 million with the intention of having an additional allotment of CIP money to finish the rest of the the project. Is that correct? Through you.
That is correct.
That is correct. Yes, it is.
So question for the mayor or for the other gentleman. So the 1.5 is really for two fields, the, repair the existing turf field and then to do the baseball field.
Through you, Council Chair, the 1.5 is inadequate to do both those projects, which is why you are looking to add another one to one and a half million dollars to the project to do the entire thing, should you choose to do so.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Chris, one more question, if I could.
Any of, so discussion on this item, Greg?
Absolutely. Did we previously approve monies for the turf fields at Benell?
Mr. Timniak.
Can you hear me? Yes. This is, this is a two-year project. We did approve money to start the project last year and we're trying to get more money to finish the project right now. It's, it's an entire turf complex. I don't have the language in front of me, but I think we kept it vague so that it was turf projects at Benell to cover everything in case we're in this situation where we had the ability to have the overflow from one go to the other. We could right-size the second, the second borrowing. It's similar to a lot of projects we do, which are multi-year projects throughout the town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Greg. I'll just, I'll just add a comment to the Parks and Rec Committee, to everyone who's been working on this. This has been an awesome project that you guys have been getting done for the kids in this town. And as, and as an entire athletic field improvement, it's not just the football field, it's an entire athletic field improvement. That's awesome. All you've been, it's your hard work. I'm going to call for a vote.
Council Chair.
Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor.
Chair. I know that Councilman O'Brien and Council, Councilman Poisson have been very, very involved in this project. In fact, they have spearheaded this, moving it forward. So they may have additional information if either one of them wants to share.
Councilman Chair, Bill O'Brien.
Bill O'Brien, go ahead, sir, Mr. O'Brien.
Well, one point about both this field and Penders is that they're more community fields than they are school fields. They're used, percentage-wise, they're used more by community organizations than they are by the schools. If you think about Little League and, you know, all the other organizations. And also, one of the positives coming out of the situation where now is this project now will get done probably about two months ahead of schedule.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Ken, Mr. Poisson, would you like to add anything?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I just wanted to, I was going to say exactly what Bill said, that these are community fields and it really just should be called the Benell turf project like it is in the CIP that Mr. Timniak alluded to. And we already obviously okayed the money for this project in last year's CIP. Otherwise, we wouldn't be able to be going ahead and telling the mayor to sign the contract now. And the money that's hopefully in next year's CIP is to continue the project with the extension of the baseball field and that's also going to turn into a multi-use field. It's going to be baseball, softball, lacrosse, soccer to be used by not only the high schools, as Bill just said, but a lot of youth programs in town.
Thank you, Mr. Poisson. Margot, with that, we're to call the roll call, please.
Margot Pickett, council clerk. This is the roll call vote for agenda item 7.1. Ms. Shake.
Yes.
Mr. Taveras.
Yes.
Mr. Harden.
Yes.
Mr. Can.
Yes.
Mr. Poisson.
Yes.
Mr. Perillo.
Yes.
Mr. Connor.
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.